All right, hello. It is 7:03. We are starting the meeting of the Cohasset Select Board for June 27th. Apologies, we're running. Are we able to? Mr. Sardinha, we're about to start the meeting. I think it's recording that, so we need to take that down right now because... Okay. All right. We are going to do a roll call right now. Mr. Plex, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Chris Plex here.
Grady?
Paul Grady, present.
Jack Grady, present.
Ms. Mara, present. Jean Haley-Dipple, present. Okay, all are invited to join the Board in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. No flag. All right. Just pretend it's right there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We are moving on to our first public comment. Is there any public comment that you can see? Okay. I'm going to move on to the next agenda item. License, permits, and events. The first one is a one-day liquor license for the Cohasset Sailing Club launch party Saturday, July 28th. Is there anyone here to present on that? Do you see anyone raising their hand on the Zoom screen at all? No. All right. Mr. Senior is not here right now. We do have this information in our packet. So, Betsy, is there anything that we should know about this particular event?
No, Tracy said it's a...
Okay. All right. Are there any questions that the Board has about the Cohasset Sailing Club launch party? Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the... I'm trying to get my...
Cohasset Sailing Club launch party?
Sailing Club launch party.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Let's do roll call vote. And just for the record, we can do roll call by voice vote. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Right. Moving on to the next issue. Event permit Cape Cod Bay Challenge, Saturday, August 19th. Is there anyone here for that one? Okay. Would you mind promoting them, please?
Hi. This is Mike Chase. I'm coming to you via Zoom here. I appreciate you guys hearing me. Happy to answer any questions on this and can present and give you a little bit of background on the event if that would help.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sure. So, the Cape Cod Bay Challenge is an event that's been around for... We've run it for 15 years. 2023 will be its 16th year. For 10 years, it's a stand-up paddleboard charity event. And for 10 years, we paddled across Cape Cod Bay, which was 34 miles from Plymouth to Wellfleet. And about five years ago, we kind of, for many reasons, we decided to kind of make it a nearshore charity paddle. And the last few years, we've done it basically from Duxbury Beach up to the mouth of the North and South River, and then up to South River, and to the Kettle Footbridge in Marshfield where it would end. Last year, we ran into a little bit of weather issues. And so this year, to cover all bases, I was looking to firm a start location from the south, which would be Duxbury Beach, and the north, which would be Cohasset Harbor. Just so I can, we can, you know, we can go with the wind to make it easier for the paddler, depending on how the forecast is looking. So, what I'm asking for and what I've kind of put an event permit in for is use Parker Ave Boat Ramp on the morning of the 19th to have our paddlers, which would be probably somewhere in the rain, 35 paddlers, launch, head out the harbor, and then head south down the coast to the mouth of the North and South Rivers, should the weather and wind conditions make a launch from Cohasset more favorable. So, the probability of that happening, I would, you know, throw it up at 50% of prevailing winds. In the summer are from the southwest, so I would imagine that Duxbury is most likely going to be our start spot, but was hoping to have a contingent plan if the south was not a viable option. Just really quickly, we raised money for a charity called Christopher's Haven. It's a Ronald McDonald kind of organization that has nine apartments next to Mass General Hospital that house families and their children who come to Boston for certain pediatric cancer treatments. And they put them up there for the stay of their treatment and hopefully, you know, go home cancer-free.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions that my fellow Board members have?
Just briefly, if you could talk a little bit about your parking plan. I'm just want to make sure with 30 to 35 paddlers that we're not going to be taking over the entire parking lot today. It's a great event. We just want to make sure everyone can make use of the facility.
Sure. Fully understand that. The paddlers will be dropped off by friends or family. And so, you know, the timing will be sometime, you know, early morning on the... Right now, I think it's scheduled at, you know, between 7:00 and 9:00 with a launch at 8:00. That might move a little bit earlier in the morning, which actually, I think, would probably be beneficial for just making sure we're not interrupting other people's enjoyment of that area. But we don't, we wouldn't plan on having any cars parked in that area for a prolonged period of time. It would just be to drop off paddlers. And so, I think when talking with the Harbor Master, Harbor Master Gibbons, and also the Chief Police, I think the preferred way to do this would be to have paddlers dropped off potentially up near the parking lot at Cohasset Light Keepers House, and then walking the path at the bridge to the Parker Ave landing. So, we're not, you know, bringing cars down 30, whatever it might be, 30 cars down the Parker Ave. So, our plan would be to do that if that's acceptable to the Select Board. And again, there would be no cars there that would be parked permanently for the day.
And just to confirm, I did reach out to Chief Quigley about the same question, and he confirmed that that would be the plan and that they will hire at least one detail officer to monitor the short window when they're potentially at Government Island. So, that's consistent. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I had the same question, and I saw that you did have. Can you stagger some to Parker Ave and then some to Light Keepers or the Sailing Club to walk the path?
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that if that makes more sense. You know, we, there's no... I don't have a preference. Whatever works best for the town and for the residents that it may impact.
Okay. And is this a registered event? So, people have to sign in and register?
Correct, yes. They have to register and pay a registration fee, yes.
Okay. And then, when do you cut registration so you know how many people?
We cut registration off a week before the event.
Okay.
And, but I can tell you that, you know, for the past five years, it hasn't been more than, you know, 40 paddlers. For that, I wouldn't expect it to be more this year.
Okay. And thank you. And with our brand-new boat ramp, I think low tide at 7:53 isn't going to be an issue.
Yeah. It might be an issue for our paddlers getting out there, but I think they'll be... But for the boat perspective, I agree with that.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the 2023 Cape Cod Bay Challenge.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. Thank you, and good luck. We ask you to continue working with our chief on those plans as they develop, and good luck with your event.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we are at the Select Board Goals section. And for those who are viewing from home, you can see that the proposed Select Board Goals are on the second page of the agenda. So, this follows from the meeting that we had approximately two meetings ago. I would invite everyone to take a look. We have four proposed goals, some of which we'll talk about later on, assuming we adopt them. Any discussion? All right. Would anyone like to make a motion? And to adopt the goals? Any second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. No one's opposed. All in favor. We are moving right along. We are now at Roads and Sidewalks. We're about 15 minutes early for Roads and Sidewalks. We have two individuals here. Do we have any concern with moving the agenda item up to 7:15? Because we've actually been going more quickly than we thought. All right. All right. Let's move the item up to 7:15. So, now we're doing a... Oh, Ms. Chloe.
There is a quick little PowerPoint. If somebody could look it up.
And I'm sorry. Let me just check to make sure Chris Senior isn't virtually available. Is Mr. Senior available by Zoom? We were going to do a new employee introduction, but he is not here yet. Do you see him in the audience? Okay. That's all right. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
For the record, Jay Papari, 713 Jerusalem Road. Good evening, Select Board members. I'm here on behalf of the... If you go back one slide, please. Sidewalk Committee, I guess officially known as the Sidewalk Safety and Connectivity Committee. Pardon the June 17th. I thought we were doing this last week. I know it's the 27th this evening. Next slide, please. So, we've had about five meetings. This meeting, this committee got off to a little bit of a slow start. Our first meeting was in mid-April. Again, we've been meeting like every other week now. We just had a meeting last week. Our next meeting is July 11th. So, we're continuing to meet every other week for the immediate future. We have seven members up here now. Myself, Ralph, Dormenter, Vice Chair, Julie Secretary. We have representation from the Capitol Budget, the Rec Commission, as well as the Select Board, as you can see, and other members, as well as Brian Joyce, who I'm not sure if that's official yet, the ex-officio VP Director on Board, as part of the Commission. Next slide, please. So, again, this is just a quick little update. We're just starting to get into the finer details of projects and understanding the ins and outs of what needs to happen here as we move forward. We have completed one project that was well, well overdue for paving. Thank you, Brian Joyce, who just jumped in behind me here. This project was the Church Street area. It was from the Situate Town Line down along Don Street, along the Beechwood Playground. That was money that was from the state of Massachusetts, funded by the Winter Recovery Assistance Program. That road was on our list of things to do with next year or so. I am glad they were able to tackle that. That money had to be spent by June. Brian was a strong asset to that whole program. So, that was just done about two weeks ago. Next slide, please. The upcoming paving plan that is on the books here and probably going to be done end of July, maybe early August, but definitely in the next 45 days or so. And again, these were roadways that were on the town's paving plan for 2023. Smith Place and Cushing Road. Again, Smith Place, that area, if you ever been back there, is a nightmare. And unfortunately, there's a handicap, not a handicap, but a special needs program back there. Buses going back and forth. You almost need four-wheel drive to get down there. It's long, long overdue. So, the entire area of Smith Place, along with Cushing Road from Pleasant over to Smith Place. So, that came in at $154,000. That is the actual work to be done. The estimate on this one, and even the next one, was about double that. So, it was really nice to see that the monies come in were about 50% of what was actually projected in the town's plan. And so, the next roadway is Margen Street. That's Elm Street down to Atlantic, and then Atlantic from Margen Street out to Whitehead. So, basically, it's almost the end of the, where the condo project is right now, all the way down to Whitehead. And again, that road is much, much needed. And so, that road, that quote came in at $182,000. Both funded, will be funded by the town of Cohasset. And the last project that's on the docket here is Pond Street. That's from 3A down to the about 100 Pond Street. And that's to, there's a gas line that went in there. So, wherever the end of the gas trench line is will be paved. And that's actually going to be funded by the gas company. So, we're off the hook for that, and that's $130,000. So, as of right now, just for roughly the next 45 days that's on the docket, we have 154 plus 182, roughly around $340,000. In the paving plan, or not in the paving plan, but in the balance of roadway in the budget right now is a little less than $1.2 million. Now, I know that you need to save money for the side, for contingencies, for maintenance, et cetera. So, if you were talking dollars and cents on what's available right now, I would say, give or take, roughly $500,000 would be a safe number if, once these two projects were completed. Next slide, please. So, some pending projects is the Elm Street project, which Mike is going to talk about in a little bit, as well as Beechwood Street. If you've ever been down Beechwood, you can see that it's under construction right now. That project is actually going to be funded by the gas company. It's from Bound Brook down to Kendall Village, roughly, is about where the Shaw's entrances. And I know that many people have talked about, why is this road being paved tomorrow? There's a lot of things that go into paving, as I'm learning through this whole process. For example, like if there's a construction area, if somebody's digging a sewer line, a gas line, or a water line down the middle of the road, it's only four feet wide. They have to backfill that. And then, you've got to let that set for at least a minimum of 90 days. Preferably, it would be, in a perfect world, you let that set for a whole winter cycle. If not, you pave the road immediately. And then, six months later, you're going to have this in the middle of the road. And everyone's going to be complaining the road's going to have to be paved again. So, these two projects are, you know, potentially could be done in the fall, but that's probably a Select Board decision, definitely Elm Street. But there's the question of, you know, whether or not these projects would be kicked at early 2024. Next slide, please. So, I probably should have put this early on. We did start, and we're still continuing to work on the criteria for sidewalk consideration. There's a... We tried to narrow this down to two or three criteria, but it just, it wasn't going to work. And so, without going through it, really, the first one there is connectivity. Really connecting sidewalks to the school, townwide, and it really... Oh, I'm sorry. Really goes into the next one as well. It's just really townwide connectivity, connecting the critical areas, the neighborhood, schools, town, harbor, public transportation, recreational use. It would be great if you could walk from West Corner down the end of Jerusalem Road on the hull line all the way to the end of Beechwood, and vice versa, all the way down to the harbor. You know, that would be perfect. And so, we started to talk about developing a radii of half a mile, a mile and a mile and a half outside of the schools. And when we looked at that, we looked at actually a two-mile radii. And believe it or not, it covered like 90% of the entire town. It's a small town, and schools are in the center. So, we're still working on that. And then, just again, pave, repair, ongoing maintenance, et cetera, to make these distinct sidewalks ADA compliant. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a little bit. And then, just create new sidewalks that connect recreational areas, like the harbor, Sandy Beach, Rocky Beach, et cetera. And then, just to try to address some safety measures in critical areas, perhaps maybe we could do some painting of bike lanes. A lot of the roads at Cohasset are already, they're not very wide anyway. But when you have children, not children pushing children in strollers, but parents pushing children in strollers, et cetera, you know, especially around the Jerusalem Road area, it's a miracle that we don't have a serious injury on some of these roadways. So, perhaps maybe we could do some painting of some bike lanes, walking lanes, et cetera. And then, certainly, last but not least, is just addressing the needs of the Town's Consultant 2022 report. That was a very well-done report, in addition to the master plan. Next slide, please. So, we have put in for some grant money. This was the new program that I just found out about, the One-Stop Grant Program applications. We found out about this in the middle of May, and the applications were due June 2nd. So, we had a lot of scurrying around. And it's actually, these three gentlemen here, Ralph, Mike, and Brian, were instrumental in providing a lot of the documentation, helping me with the Elm Street Corridor Project application. So, that application we put in for Elm Street was $915,000. Probably went a little heavy and a little high on that, probably one of the contingency. And also, to address the townwide, make all townwide sidewalks ADA accessible. That was also identified in the Town's report. And I believe the Town's report stated it was $132,000 to do that. But we, again, we kind of added a little bit to that and made it $160,000. That was kind of like low-hanging fruit, if you ask me. Tomorrow, with a little bit of engineering. So, we won't find out about these grants until, whether or not we're approved or funded until October 1st. Unfortunately, from the state of Massachusetts, they have to go through that. But we're optimistic, but there's no guarantee.
What if hypothetically, we decide to do work on Elm Street, and we spend the money we have right now on our capital stabilization fund, let's say? Can we reimburse ourselves if we get the grant later on?
That's a good question, and I have to look into that. I guess, you know, we were fairly in-depth. We submitted all the plans that we have as of now, Mike's plans, and which were very in-depth. If we didn't follow the plans to a T, perhaps maybe we could come back in with grant money and finish those to a T? I don't know. It's definitely a question to follow up on. But again, we'll find out October 1st.
Yeah. So, typically, you can't start a project and use the money that's awarded afterwards. Typically, they give you a notice to proceed, and then you can, you know, all of your encumbrances after that date is what you can... We don't know what program this is going to be funded on, but that's a...
Next slide, please. So, this is the last slide I have. Again, we're just starting to get heavily involved in the technical aspects of this. We'll continue to explore state and the other federal grant monies that are available, continue to prioritize the roads and the sidewalks, et cetera. We're now just, we're in the middle of like paving schedule, right? It's the middle of, end of June here. We're living in the state of Massachusetts from a small window. We can't pave 365 days a year. I'm not going to put a timeframe on the end date, but it's certainly late fall. It's not going to be Thanksgiving in December and January. We're not going to be doing any paving. So, the window of opportunity is now, probably till...
November 1st.
November, yeah. November 1st to be a safe time. And we continue to get estimates on other roads that we have prioritized. We have a list of roadways for future consideration. Actually, there's a 10-year plan. So, you know, if monies were available, perhaps we could give some priorities that were scheduled for 2024 or 2025, move those up to 2023. But we'd have to get working on those quick. We would need... TL Edwards, I believe, has 11 communities that they're paving for right now. So, there are 11 communities fighting for, to get on the schedule, TL Edwards to get paved. And that's really all I had. I know we had a much more in-depth presentation on Elm Street, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And I did want to talk briefly about Elm Street.
Before we get to Elm Street, does anyone have any questions on the general presentation?
Just that one for Brian. So, Brian, if we did decide, you know, and we're looking at Mike's plan, and we find the path, we're going to go forward. But if we wanted to get something done this year, we're kind of constrained by waiting for the October 1st deadline or...
So, we could do a little more research. So, the One-Stop Grant that Jay put in on behalf of the committee in the town was... It's one-stop application, but it covers a variety of different grant funds. So, it could be federal funds. It's not like a shared streets, or it's not Saferoots and School, which in particular programs. It's all of those programs under one umbrella of an application. And the state, MassDOT, kind of looks at the application and puts it into the, you know, the best grant that might fit for consideration. So, but go back to your question. Typically, grants, you can't spend the money until you're one of the monies. So, the safest that would be, you know, if you wanted to use the grant money to start after that date. But we can do some research, you know, after they start considering the grant and see what program they'd be under. And if we could start the money...
That's what I'm just trying... Could we use it potentially, say, again, if we started some roadwork on Elm? Could we use it, say, in the radii that Jay was talking about, you know, as connectivity? That's what I was just... So, or is it dedicated circuit at Elm? That's my own, that's...
So, the grants for Elm Street and ADA accessibility programs around town, really? Any sidewalk?
Two separate grants.
Yeah, I saw that.
I remember, you know, looking back now, taking Jack's question at the moment. It specifically didn't say, no work shall be conducted before October 1st. And it's unfortunate that we have to wait that long, but there may be a couple hundred applications across the entire state of Massachusetts. And again, like with any grant, if you are, you know, grant project reviewers, et cetera. And if they go out there and see that the project is already underway, the chances are very likely that the funding would just stop immediately or never even be issued at all.
Yeah, there's been talk about comprehensive understanding of our paving needs. And my understanding is, there is some indication of what would be a recurring, and this is really for you, Brian, I think you've done the work on this. What is our recurring paving needs? Is it over a 10-year program where you have to repave everything? And do we have some kind of ballpark figure of how much we, long-term, including everything, grants? Should it be a 10-year thing? And how much is an annual cost? So, we have a feeling for the whole...
Yeah. I mean, it's a tough question, because all roads aren't equal in width and kind of dimension. But generally, our road paving plan is based on a 20-year cycle, so that every road gets paved every 20 years. So, again, just speaking generally, 40 miles of road, we need to do about two miles per year to stay on that 20-year cycle. And again, generally, two miles of road, or let's go down to a mile road, was 400,000 to 500,000 in previous years. And, you know, the escalation of prices is also in the paving industry, specifically oil and materials. We did see, you know, there's about 120 different bid items under our contractor, MAPC. Every item that you imagine to, you know, from curving to catch bases to real. The road, and some of the items, they've all had a little escalator. Some of them have gone up 100%, some of them have gone up 20%. So, depending on what the road materials...
So, we're looking at the bare minimum, $1 million a year, and we repave everything in 20 years. And that's today's prices with an understanding. Just so it helps the town and the Select Board and everybody at home to have an idea of the kind of money that it's going to take to fund all of this.
Yeah. So, that's what we're asking and projecting in the next cycle, is $1 million, you know, ongoing per year to keep up our...
Thank you. Done good work.
Yes, Paul.
And Jay has done good work as well. I didn't want to...
So, Brian, in our discussions, but eventually, when we finish doing what we want to do and what we have to do, those costs will be escalated.
Yeah. So, if you look at the report that Jay referenced, there's roads that are falling apart that need major construction. So, it's basically, you take it down to the subgrade and you build it back up. And if you get into a cycle where you're just doing milling overlays, you know, your subgrade is in good shape, your base course is in good good shape, you're just milling the road and resurfacing the concrete, it's cheap. So, that's kind of what we want to... And that's a minor rehabilitation, as opposed to kind of a major rehabilitation. So, we'd like to get, you know, get all the major stuff done, right? And then, just continue on a minor cycle.
That's also, as we start to evolve these roadways, we also want to look at the sidewalk.
Yes.
That is either existing or non-existing on a roadway that's up for a future paving. We don't want to pave the road and then come back into the sidewalk at another time. Let's, if it can be done in a financially and physical way, we'd like to move that forward.
You know, where I'm going is after a perfect world, once we're doing, done doing what we should do and have to do. That's where I'm saying, pointing towards the town that those costs will de-escalate. And as Brian said, it becomes maintenance and follow-up.
So the select board just adopted a goal, one out of four, to move forward with a special stabilization fund for fall town meeting. And one fund, one of which of the funds is for roads and sidewalks. And so I think what we had, and I'm refreshing my memory as to the exact goals, but one of the things that we had talked about in the context of that goal was to try to get a draft report from you all. And it doesn't need to be complicated, but just to, really for the citizens that we're going to ask to pay this extra money, extra taxes for, a plan for how we will responsibly spend it, both the need and then the spend going forward. And I know that it looks like you're headed in a great direction and probably cycling, circling around the existing plan plus some obvious candidates in the future for money that can be spent in all different ways. But I did want to flag that we just adopted that goal for fall town meeting as an FYI to you. The other thing I just wanted to mention is, and I know some of you have seen this, if not all of you, the resiliency studies that we've been doing through Woods Hole recommend raising roads, which are very expensive, including near Elm Street, you know, the sewer plant, in order to protect the sewer plant, among other critical assets. So that may be something that we should at least footnote in the plan that, that could and should be something that we will need to probably give some serious consideration to in the future and may see, see in federal funding for as well. But I did want to mention, just as a practical matter, sort of where we were in terms of the select board process and town meeting that's coming up. So without further ado.
I have a question, yeah, oh, sorry. That's okay. So Brian, I just have a clarifying question though, when we, we say the streets and co-hasset, we're really talking about the public ways and not the private ways. And I just want to make sure the community is aware of that because we have a fair amount of private ways that are also in disrepair. And I know we have a, from 2018, the select board adopted a policy to address private ways, but we're looking at public ways.
That's correct, yeah. So the, the exact figure is about 37 miles of public roads and about 13 miles of private ways, which are road, road layout and frontage off of that. But then there's a third category of shared private driveways that are kind of in that private way too, where you might have six houses off a shared driveway that has easements. So the town, we don't, we don't maintain those. We don't, we'll, we'll plow, three more houses for public safety, plow, sand, sweep and patch where we don't repave or do any kind of major maintenance.
Right, so if residents on private ways were interested in participating in paving program, they should look to the 2018 policy for betterment to accomplish that, right?
Yeah, and so briefly, they, they petitioned the select board with 80% of the butters of that street with a petition to fix up the roadway. I get a quote presented to them. If they still agree with the quote, then they, you know, the select board votes to proceed and it's funded by the town and they pay it through a 10-year benefit program.
Okay, thank you. Then I have one more question regarding the financing. So presently, well, historically, capital budget has been allocating $300,000 a year at annual town meeting for, for roads and sidewalks, you know, improvements. And then there's chapter 90 money. Is the million dollars you referenced annually, is that over and above the 300 and the chapter 90?
No, that would be all-inclusive.
All-inclusive.
So chapter 90 is anywhere usually between 210 and 240, 250 per year, depending on the state revenue. So, so that's roughly what we get from the state in chapter 90 per year. So we'd have to supplement that with, you know, to get to the million.
Okay, so supplemented, okay, okay, thank you.
Instead of, in lieu of the capital budget, 300,000.
One thing that I know the committee was interested in doing was maybe narrowing the quorum and proposed, asked us to put in a proposed charge to accomplish that and to make Mr. Joyce a voting ex officio member. So you could effectively run yourselves, given, you know, the fact that you've sometimes had trouble getting enough people to effectively run those meetings. And so I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that. We do have an amended charge in the packet for my fellow select board members to look at, which adds Mr. Joyce and then.
So right now the committee has eight, well, had eight members up until last week. So to get a quorum, we would need five of the eight members. Four wouldn't do it. And we had a couple individuals which, for whatever reason, you know, couldn't make the meeting. It just made having a quorum of five very difficult. We didn't have a problem with four, it was that fifth person. We had a recent resignation, so now we're actually at seven members. A seven-member board would be great. We don't have to go look for two additional citizens at large to join an already formed committee. If we continue with the seven members, we would have four. I don't think we would have a problem having, having four members at all. It would work very nicely. Brian is not a typically voting member, but he's a huge asset to this committee. I mean, we, we don't, we have to schedule the meetings around Brian's schedule because if he's not here, he has valuable input from the town.
Well, we looked into that for you and Brian is a co-hasset resident. So Brian could be an associate member. So if someone didn't show up, but Brian was there, he could stand in as that, as an associate member. And so.
I'm fine with that arrangement.
Notice we didn't ask Brian about.
He doesn't have a choice.
Let the record reflect, he's nodding, he's nodding.
He's falling on the sword tonight.
And, and I also updated the preliminary report to August. Again, the preliminary report.
August 1st or August 30th?
Let me look real quick.
I think it's August 1st.
I think it's August 1st.
You have some work to do.
I'm being ambitious. Any discussion, questions, like to entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the new charge.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so thank you.
Yeah.
And now you want to do Elm Street?
Yeah, can we put up the, the, the plan for Elm Street? This might take a little bit of maneuvering around a little bit, some zooming in and moving a little bit. But before I do turn it over to Mike, we've had two meetings on this. We had a meeting last week and long story short, the committee voted to move this project forward to the select board. It wasn't an approval of the project, it was just making a motion to move it forward with our consensus that we were in favor and support of the project. There were some, there were some questions and some concerns regarding the parking around the triangle and some of the other. Honestly, I don't think that that's within the sidewalk committee jurisdiction to dictate where cars can be parked and where they can't be parked. I only, like, one of my personal comments was that it's a, making the roadway down to 22 feet with parking and questioning whether or not parking could be even allowed overnight, which again is outside of sidewalk committee's purview, if you ask me, was more of a select board decision. So it was really came down to emergency vehicles and being able to get in and out of that whole area. We talked about whether or not this project should be a project that should be teed up for the fall or should be with all of the somewhat unknowns of the Woods Hole study and the climate change and resiliency, et cetera. Whether or not this project would be an early 2024 project, also given the potential unknowns of the project over there. If all, in a perfect world, I understand the curbing will be done by August 1st. But if that wasn't done, you know, where would be, where would we be with this project? But overall, there's a lot of benefits to it. We really liked the, the six-foot sidewalk on the, I guess that might be, I'll call it the lower side, the north side, the top side, we'll call it the bottom side and top side. There, the additional forefoot or the reconstruction of the existing sidewalk there with the curbing. There was a little bit of a buffer area in there now. And I don't want to steal all Mike's thunder, but just some of the positives that the committee found with a little bit of a buffer area between the sidewalk and the roadway with some trees and some grassy area, et cetera. And then the crosswalks, which were really critical. If you go down there, especially this time of day or this time of year, if you go down there at 2:30 in the afternoon or anytime, is, I couldn't tell you how many kids going to the sailing club, going to the yacht club. Everyone's on bikes coming from downtown, in addition to the general public walking down there. So crosswalks were huge benefits. So overall, we saw a lot of benefits to this project. And again, the committee voted to, to move this project forward with a vote to recommend moving it forward to the select board. So without further ado, I want to turn it over to Mike here. And I don't know if you can see it from their mic. You may want to zoom in and zoom out a little bit for, for everybody or take it from there.
Could you all see it well enough? We also can reject it up on the big screen, but we have to.
That would be appreciated.
But we'd have to move the television, the television screen.
You can also just move your chairs over here.
Yes.
Can you all see it well enough?
Yeah, Connie, if you want to come up.
So let me, Mike Sardino, 100 Pott Street, here in Cohasset. Let me give you a little bit of history if I can, because I know that some of you may not be familiar with the fact that Elm Street has been on public conscious for several years. After the Cohasset master plan and the Cohasset Harbor plan were approved by the town, subsequently by the state, those plans both represented that there'd be a stronger connection between the harbor and the village center. And that got people thinking regarding what does that mean? The, in early 21, Elm Street Corridor Working Group was formed, which was sort of approved by the harbor committee to, to do this. I was a member at large on that committee. Diane Kennedy was on it, Art Brune was on it. There were several other people who were on that committee. Around the same time, Elm Street Corridor, town hired consultant, Western Sampson, to assist the town in conceptualizing a way to make that connection stronger. Now, we had already had some ideas on that committee as to what that was. The consultant came in and gave their thoughts, known to which the working group provided feedback. The consultant also had been hired to get feedback from the town relative to townwide survey, an online survey, asking for prioritization as to what people would like to see relative to Elm Street. And one of the, or several of the key things were public safety. Typically, as it relates to, it's on bikes, kids crossing the street to the bus stop near Elm Court. The speed on the road, which a lot of the residents along Elm Street each referred to, people were almost running stop signs at the triangle, et cetera. So there was a safety issue of pedestrian and vehicular. Then there was the aesthetic issue. They wanted to have street trees, they wanted the road narrower, blah, blah, blah. So all that stuff ultimately became part of the criteria by which the consultant was starting to move towards. And definitely the Elm Street Working Group was working towards relative to feedback. That study sort of concluded in the summer of 2021. And then it just sort of languished. That study, which I can show you here, is pretty similar to where we, where we ended up. It narrowed the road, it was parking on one side and it had significant support from people who attended the monthly forums that were put on online for reviewing the information. In January 22, Jason Federico, town engineer, was asked to consolidate the information that had been discussed and/or put on, input in graphics relative to the consultant, could put it into a form that could be costed. He did that in early, early January of 22. Cost estimate was done by an outside consultant with some criteria. And that plan actually represented an alternative where Cove Street was moved. So it was a more aggressive plan than what you see here on the board. Since that time, it's basically just been city. Nothing's been happening. Early this year, it sort of started getting discussion amongst people here in town, some members on the board here, relative to, let's figure out what we're doing with Elm Street. I was asked to participate in that because I had been on the Elm Street Working Group. I have experience in doing this kind of stuff. I'm not a civil engineer, but land planning and et cetera. So Ralph and I were pretty much involved in trying to figure out what to do. We consulted with Brian numerous times. And in April of this year, we actually took a sketch drawing of what this was and put it into the computer system. The objective being that hardline drawings on a survey was something that would be more relevant for a contractor to literally cost estimate. This was running almost concurrently with the bidding that was being done for consortium of towns, a consortium of towns relative to public works costs for this that Brian has made reference to. And so we met with that contractor after that was finally awarded. We gave him the drawings and he was going to use that for creating a cost estimate. And as Jason referred, we've got a couple of things for the sidewalk committee, one with the freehand sketches and one with the plan that you see here. So with that, let me try to, if you don't mind, I'm going to stand behind you so I can point with the pointer.
And Mr. Sardino, not to rush you, but we still have to get to our sewer commission update. So a few more minutes and then we need to move it on for discussion. Or we will need to start discussing Elm Street and start making some decisions because we have to make sure we leave time for our sewer commission too that was on at 7:30. So we have a lot going on.
We're going to, you're not, you can't really see it that well from where you're sitting. Can you enlarge it again, please? So the project is basically from Brook Street, which is the left-hand edge of the, the left-hand end of the screen. This is, oh, this is not, it only projects there, it doesn't project onto the television screen. If I may, I'll stand here. Brook Street all the way down to Summer Street and basically to the interface with Margin Street. What has, what is being shown here is that we're going to have two travel lanes of 24 feet. The northern curb line is remaining in place. The southern curb line is moving eight feet north because the eight feet of parking on the north side has been removed. What that does is it gives us a six-foot sidewalk and it gets us a six-foot grass strip. The intent of the plan is the back of the existing sidewalk is the back of the new sidewalk. We're not trying to intrude into anybody's perceived what, yours, even though this black line you see here is actually the property lines. Roll that to the left. One of the other things that we are intending to do, as you know, that Elm Street has 40 feet of pavement currently, there's no paint lines except down the middle, providing a hedge to a parking bay, just like we did on North Main Street. We'll define travel lanes, even if there's no cars there. And we are showing that there's parking along all of this edge, independent of places like opposite the fire station where there's, was already striped someone's for no parking. Scroll to the left, please. Keep on. So one of the initial feedback from residents on the street that had kids is they wanted a side of crosswalks. This side of the street at Elm Court is a bus stop. And so we're providing a crosswalk here with a bump out from the curb line so that it narrows the road. Parking is on either side of it and handicap accessibility is a requirement. That would be going in at the crosswalks as well. Scroll to the left. So when you get down to this area. So when you get down to this area, sidewalk actually starts to literally touch the property line, whereas everywhere else, the property, the back of sidewalk is offset from the property line by six or eight feet. And so down here, when we have a consistent six-foot wide sidewalk, what it does, eight foot parking, six foot sidewalk, we narrowed the road to 22 feet, which was something that was discussed back during the consultancy age period of time, approved by the, was discussed with the fire chief and with it as long as all the turning movements were acceptable for fire truck movements. So in order to minimize the removal of and relocation of curb line on the triangle, which was a request by the Legion, they didn't want to lose any square footage out there possibly because of the flag placement. This becomes 22 feet through here. There's a crosswalk proposed here, which takes people from the south side to the triangle, the new sidewalk along the north side of the triangle. This is the existing curb line right here. So we're actually, we're actually adding additional dimension, get a strip of parking along that edge. This particular sidewalk goes straight to the harbor. The sidewalk along here is going to go straight past these buildings right to the harbor. So we have almost a straight shot, a visual straight shot down Elm Street because you can see the condominium buildings are pulled to the south. They no longer turn up towards Margin Street.
But the existing sidewalk still remains on the other side? Is that right?
The existing sidewalk continues on the other side. So we now have a crosswalk here, crosswalk here, parking there, parking here, and parking continues around there. Can you scroll to the left, please, and up? Maybe you should scroll.
It's going down.
Scroll up a bit. In the wrong direction. Keep going, keep going. There you go. Maybe you can make it a little bit smaller. Scroll down a little bit. A little more. Keep going. Okay, that's it. So we have Summer Street coming in here. Border Street is here. The park is here. This is the Legion. There's angled parking along this side of the street, the objective being that we continue the six-foot sidewalk down. Again, we have the sidewalk kind of kissing the property line here. It's in front of the building, which is actually over the property line by a tiny bit. These angled parking spaces are actually dimensionally not, not standard. They were shorter than they should be as an angled parking space. We discussed this with Brian, and we are electing to make those parking spaces standard in their dimension with parking on the other side of the street. The sidewalk and curb line here are remaining where they exist. That would also narrow the street to 22 feet. So we have 22 feet from here to the other end of the triangle, which again is perfectly serviceable. Parking along this side, parking along that side, plus parking here has given us almost, as far as demarcation lines, gives us almost 20 to 25 cars more than exist. As you may be aware, there's been plenty of pressure in town to add more parking somehow in the harbor area because of just extreme use of the harbor from the summer in particular. So the wider sidewalks provide safety for kids to get to the yacht club, get to the sailing club. And the parking does not diminish really in any way down from this end. It's actually extended probably as a net. This parking net's demarked down here with paint lines probably makes up for the parking that has been removed from the north side of the street.
Okay, well, thank you.
This area right here at Cove Street, and you may have maybe a call that you voted earlier this year to not move Cove Street. Cove Street remains exactly the same. This edge of the triangle is the edge of the triangle. It consists, the road is 26 feet wide to a parking edge. So there's plenty of dimension for the big tur, the big curves here relative to people with trailers and boats and what have you.
Okay, Mr. Grady. So I just ask my fellow board members, because we still do have to get to sewer. Let's just try to keep the questions tight so we can have some brief discussion and try to help give the sidewalk committee some next steps, including on Elm Street. Mr. Grady, please.
Mike, thank you so much for all that hard work you're doing. I have one thing I'm going to throw up there that I'm looking, I'm looking at a pinch point. And I have to say, I'm a little leery about the parking in front of CHP. You know, I see that as a blind spot. That's a tight area. If you're getting trucks, people, I see, you know, potentially overnight parking and just people taking up those zones. And I also see kids going up around and just coming out. It just takes one. It's the parking in front of the condominium complex that's worrying me. Everything else, I think Elm looks fantastic to me. But that would be kind of a scary thought. You also have the sidewalks in front of the, the parking, I'm sorry, in front of the Legion, which I'm anticipating probably staying. That's a tight spot. It's just a little reminiscent to me of the Village right now, trying to squeeze through. And that's about my drawback on that is just the parking in front of the condo complex. That's my one worry over there.
What's the question? It's Summer Street?
Right there in front, where we have the, we have the Memorial Park, and then we have the buildings.
Cove.
Cove Road, sorry. The parking all along Cove.
Oh, no, I understand that. You were pointing to something about the Legion?
No, I think I anticipate where the parking, the sideways parking is going to stay.
Oh, yes, okay.
So I see a real pinch point right there.
Well, it's 26 feet wide.
It's still, it's like driving through the Village. And again, I think all the parking that you've aligned is fantastic. I have no issue with it whatsoever. Just that part is the only thing that's making me nervous is going up around the, around the, this, you know, the new condo complex.
If I could just clarify, I think it says it's 22 feet wide in front of the Legion?
This section of Summer right in here is 22 feet. This is supposed to be 22 feet because dimensionally, with the dimension of the angled parking, eight feet of the parking on the other side, and the existing curb line remaining, that nets down to 22 feet.
Mr. Plasky, you have any other questions or comments?
Nothing else to add. Thank you.
Mr. Grady?
Yeah, I would, I think you've done a good job, by the way. And I followed all the work you've done. And you know, the patience of Joe, but you have a very good, I think it's a good program, but I think Mr. Grady's comment about that curve there, particularly if somebody opens a car door and somebody's going around. I've heard, if I've heard a lot of comments about anything, it's certainly of that curves there. So aside from that curve parking on Cove, Cove Road, which I think I would agree with Paul Grady's assessment of that, but I think it's a great job. And I think we ought to indicate, move forward and get this done.
Ms. Moon?
I'll echo everyone. The plan looks great. I'm very excited to have Elm Street look like Cohasset. The, I have a question. Is this configuration conducive to commercial vehicles either entering CHP or going around Border Street? It is.
Yeah, all the turning movements, like for instance, this, this turning movement here, this radii on that curve is 30 feet. That's typical. It's more than you have almost any place in town already. And it's certainly serviceable for a fire truck and tractor trailers.
Okay.
Yeah, so everything here, all the radii, this is existing.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
The thing is that, you know, we have a 20% reduction in the amount of pavement by narrowing up the road. So down the line, there's also a 20% reduction in the cost for repaving Elm Street.
Great, thank you. Now you're singing our tune. So Mr. Sardino, I would just echo everyone else's comments. I think it's great. You've done a great job. You too, Mr. Domansor, I know you've worked very hard on it and.
Mike is practically heroic in the amount of hours I've been spending. The hours are beyond anyone's imagination.
Yeah, I know. I know. I know. It's been a painful process, lots of iterations. I see Connie in the audience, too, who's done a lot of work vis a vis Elm Street as well. And I'm happy to see the Elms brought back to Elm Street. I would agree on the parking surrounding the Cove Street. As someone who walks that area all the time and sees the school bus always straining to make that left hand on the existing roadway, I would have concerns about narrowing it further. So it goes down Cove Street and then takes a left heading towards the police station. But otherwise, my biggest question is timing in light of the fact that we've applied for the one-stop grant. And so this brings me to my next question. How long will this take to, could we wait until October, see what the results are, and then pave within October to November?
No.
Or is that, okay.
It's too tired of the time. So this, all the curving is being, is being raised and reset for the entirety of the project. So, yeah. If it was a mill and overlay, we might be able to squeeze it in, but it's not.
Okay.
It's all overlaid.
The other question, okay. The other question I might have on timing is obviously we have a mega construction project going on at CHP right now, which if we just did a brand new repaving and everything surrounding that area, there's a lot of movement going on. And CHP came in earlier and asked for, I want to say, permission from the select board to dig up the sidewalk right in front of not the parcel facing the harbor, but across the street. And we required them to pay for repaving that whole sidewalk stretch. So they are already going to be doing digging up. And so I would just say we should coordinate with them for that plan, just to make sure what they repave is consistent with that plan.
Yeah, I've been actually in communication with what we've been discussing, just so that we can try to be in sync with understanding their schedule a little bit. May I ask a question regarding this parking on Cove?
Sure.
If it supports desire to not have parking on Cove, would it be your desire to move the curb line out so that it's out here at the edge of where the parking would have been? That would, that would basically eliminate any potential. You're going to have all that dimension there anyhow. So people might park there in the future, regardless of whether there's a paint line there or not, unless you have a bunch of no parking sites. But you could move the, you can move the curb line out. In other words, you can have, you can have this move down to here, where this becomes a curb line.
Wouldn't that narrow the road?
There's a green strip behind it.
Wouldn't that narrow the road, though? Not anymore than it is.
Well, the road is, with the parking plan, it's 26 feet wide through there. The narrowest place is 26 feet wide if there was a car parked there. If you put a curb there, it's still 26 feet wide.
Well, we're saying no parking along that stretch.
Yeah, no parking.
Mike, is there already a side, is there a proposed sidewalk in there?
There is a sidewalk there.
Yeah. So it's a four-foot sidewalk?
No, that's almost six there.
Okay, so from what I understand, you're saying to increase that sidewalk and make it even larger?
No, just put a grass strip there, just like.
Put a grass strip.
Just like we're doing everywhere else in town. I mean, if you're like, put a grass strip, and then you negate the potential where people park there. If you leave it as asphalt, people park there potentially.
I mean, it looks nice. It adds the expense. But I mean, I'm not averse to no parking at any time in there like that. Again, my fear is like someone parked there around that hard curve, just some kid coming around and opening up a door, a truck coming around, anything could happen. I think a sidewalk is fine the way it is. To me personally, the board obviously has their own choices. But I would just have it as strictly, because everything else looks fantastic, Mike. I would just have it as a no parking zone. That's me personally.
So I think it's the, it's the fact that it's a blind spot coming from Margin onto Cove.
That's the part that worries me.
That's your, that's your concern, so.
And parking around that corner because you're coming around. Anyway, we want to reduce speed and just get, anyone just coming around driving. It's just, and it just takes one. The potential for injuries just, just throwing me off a little bit.
One thing I want to point out is we were just quoted, just in the past week, the quote came in for this project at $650,000. However, I don't know if you want to speak a little more to that. There was some, it appears that there was some issues with the quote, in that there were things that we had questioned with respect to the ductile, the piping, et cetera, and whether or not that actually included the paving. I don't know if.
So 650 didn't include the trees, which we purchased, we figured we purchased them ourselves, but we had to put them in DPW funds. And, you know, and there were a lot of caveats with, you know, that as we get closer and finalize the design, we'd have to do a survey with some, you know, stakes to show the contractor where the elevation should be. So there's some extra soft cost there. But the paving and curving and, and loming and seeding and all that was part of that 650.
And could we do a two-phase? Let's say we did the straightaway, which people are desperate to fix. And then we did the second half near the triangle once the construction is reduced. And maybe if we get some of the one-stop grant, we use the money towards that. Would that be a possibility? Like, how would the state look at if we had done part of the project just to get it going and some of the money came in?
It's a good question. I think, I think any money you would spend before the grant is not money that can be reimbursed.
Yep.
But if it's, you know, if we did remainder of the project after the grant. One thing is, it's good to have continuous paving. We're doing Margin Street just, you know, up to Whitehead Road. And if we were to pave Elm Street, we would just, we'd have this section just around Cove Road and it would just look terrible. And then when you have those new pavement joints, that's, that's a point of failure. So you try to go as long as possible without having any cold, you know, cold joints.
Well, yes, the thing about the Jason Federico cost estimates is that was broken into two pieces.
Yeah.
One was the straight section only, and one was this piece down here by the triangle. It was not quite half the cost to do the straight section relative to the rest, the entire project at one point. So.
Just one more question, but more direct towards Brian. We've got the Woods Hole plan coming in, which might mean a potential elevation in the road. That's, I think, where I'm parroting off Gene a little bit. So would it be safer if we did, say, two-phase? I know it's better to, you know, do it and do it all at once. But what if we're faced with, you know, why are we going to be reinventing the wheel if they say, well, we've got to raise the elevation a certain amount? And that's.
Yes, I mean, the question is, you look at, their proposal is to raise Elm Street and Margin Street and Border Street just around, you know, the seawall area to prevent any storm surge from coming in, based on sea level rise. The projection of that sea level rise, you know, they had a 2030. So I don't think we could wait 10 years and not pay, you know.
No, no, no.
If we're going to elevate, do it immediately and project that, yes, we're projecting that that's, that's our elevation based on projections for sea level rise.
All right.
And then there's a similar increase in elevation they were proposing on Summer Street. I know it's not far what we're talking about, but it's, it's the same protection of that, that low lying area around Jacob Street.
Practically speaking, we're not going to be able to get to this till the spring anyway. I think part of what, and Gene, I think what might have been driving your comment is there's a lot of pressure for people in town to get some stuff done. Difficult driving. We all know that. So if there was a way in which we could get some immediate action done on some of the paving on Elm Street, I think there would be a lot of public support for that. So is that at all feasible?
If you voted tonight to proceed and we use the remainder of the, you know, our million to the funds, we could, we could proceed. We could tell the contractor to go forward. We could iron out the rest of the details and do it this season. But with the caveat that we wouldn't be able to use the grant money if it did come in.
What I want to hear is you talked about like a two-phase approach here. And to Brian's point, if you were, it is on the docket to do kind of the edge or say Margin Street down all the way up past the, the block over to Whitehead, if that road is being done, one option to consider, if there is still other concerns about the Cove area, is to continue the road all the way down to downtown and just do that whole stretch all the way down Elm and then left that at the tri- that whole stretch all the way down Elm and then left at the triangle and continue that road all the way to Whitehead. You'd have that whole stretch paved.
Okay. What's the feeling of the board? Do we like that suggestion where, or how are we feeling? What do you think, Jack?
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Marr, does anyone have an immediate reaction?
Yeah, I do. I, you know, I think you have projects that will show the town that we're getting things done, like Smith Place and Cushion Road and some of the other ones you articulated. So there is action. I think the Church Street was a big win in terms of public perception. It makes me really nervous to leave potentially $915,000 on the table and defer money that we could have to spend on this, that we can use maybe to accelerate other projects in town and get more accomplished for the townspeople. I just, I think it's irresponsible not to wait for grant money.
Could I suggest maybe a two-phase where we take a hard look, including working with Mr. McGowan, on what raising the road from the sewer plant would mean, which would probably cost a million dollars, given the cost to raise the road, and see if that could arguably fit within the Elm Street money if we actually, you know, if we get the grant? And so if we did just the full northern part?
Not telling you to do it, it's options to consider.
The other option is we could just think about this, and then we can come back in early July, including to see if that might be a potential way to try to preserve some of the grant money if we get it, which incidentally, we did apply previously for the grant and we didn't get it.
Right, but the fallback is a special stabilization fund, which would vote on it.
Yeah.
Fall town, special town meeting. And if it passed, we could have an ancillary article to say, we voted for it and now we want to vote to spend it on Elm Street. Right, Chris, you can do that, right? You can vote to approve the fund and then you can vote to allocate the fund and not wait for Spring Town Meeting.
Yes.
One of the options that was discussed at the committee meetings as well was to iron out the final details and to earmark the project for spring or earliest possible time in 2024, given the uncertainties about the Woods Hole study, the potential for the grant application, which we would find about in October. But just to earmark that money, put it to the side and say, this is dedicated for the Elm Street project. Again, just another consideration for first project 2024, earmarked, done, stamped. Ready to go.
Yes, Mr. Grady.
That I'd be in favor of. The shovel ready, we were ready to go FY '24. I know that everybody wants the Elm Street done. I think it's a fantastic design. It's bringing Cohasset back to Cohasset. And, you know, I've thought about a few things, like even donations of the trees, you know, get the town involved a little bit, that kind of thing. And, you know, start showing what it's going to look like. But I think that we'd throw away the grant money if we couldn't, and then defer to the chair.
So it sounds like maybe there's some consensus for early 2024 to proceed with the Elm Street project, given the uncertainties about the grant money that we don't want to be fiscally irresponsible about, even though we really like this and want to move forward? Is that the sense of the board?
I would do it, but I would want us to be very, very clear that we intend to do this.
Okay. We can put it on the agenda for July 11th if there's some final details we want to work out, but it sounds like that's where we're headed, early 2024, in terms of first thing, just to see what happens with that grant application and see if we can save ourselves $900,000.
So my question to the board is that whether or not we should be proceeding if there's a little less than 1.2 million in the roadway paving balance now. We've allocated or will have spent about $340,000, $350,000. There will be roughly, give or take, about $600,000 left over. Should we look to push forward some projects or just kind of sit back? And we have our dedicated projects. We've got Pond Street. We potentially might have Beachwood. We've got our other roadways. It just, that's our paving plan for the next two months? Should we be exploring other roadways at this point?
I would not spend and commit money until this is paid for. And if you commit to it and talk to it, you develop a constituency for it, then you start spending it, and then something happens and we don't have the money to that. I mean, if we're going to make a commitment, we make the commitment.
And that will give us just all the extra if we do get the grant money.
And then we have the next thing in place, the next priority, and, you know, maybe it's ADA accessibility.
We'll also be in a better place next year. We just found out about the, about two weeks into the committees, that tenure here finding out about the One Stop Grant. So we'll have a better, we'll have many other projects to put forward.
Okay.
And then we have new pipe drain projects and other projects to put forward, and things like.
That's a great segue to the sewer.
The committee has talked about paving. It's just that there are other things that may be holding that up. Gas, water, sewer, et cetera.
Okay.
We'll take that all into consideration.
And Mike, don't put your pen down. The drawing table up, because we have stuff for you to do.
My pleasure.
Well, thank you, Mr. Grady. So let's turn to the sewer update then, because, and I apologize for us running over a little bit, but South Main Street is definitely a street we have to pave and figure out. And so I was hoping we could get a brief update on the sort of issues surrounding that.
Well, the only issue we have there is that if, you know, if you, you know, sewer, if that's going to be paved, we'd want to probably get in there early and put a sleeve down the middle of it so we could put a pipe in there at some point in time in the future.
Okay.
And don't ask me any questions about that, because I meant to leave the stretch of my, one I hear on this. And so is that satisfy your thing on South Main?
Well, before we proceed, do we have a sense of how much South Main would cost to pave? Because.
We have a cost estimate on that.
Okay.
And I can get you the report. I just, we were supposed to get that prior to this meeting. It didn't happen.
Okay.
So I can get that to you. I should have it tomorrow morning.
Okay. Mr. Grady?
All right. And if we don't, go regional sewer.
Well, we haven't waited until, there's a moratorium, I believe, on when you can cut off a paved road, because five-year plan.
Yeah, so we have a five-year moratorium. So we have a 10-year protection plan on any new paved roads, five-year strict moratorium, and then from years six to 10 reopening penalties. So we try to keep our roads intact. So we'd like to do all the utility work prior to it. But just, South Main Street's like 1.2 miles. What I didn't mention earlier is we talked about road costs, and road cost is about $500,000 a mile. Sidewalk kind of goes against, it's about a million dollars a mile, because it's, even though it's smaller, it's handwork, and you can't get machines in there, and you have bushes and hedges and all that stuff. So figuring 1.2 miles of road and sidewalk, I think sidewalk runs the entire length of it. Maybe there's a short stretch after Pond, but so we're looking at, you know, probably maybe 1.4 if we did all the sidewalks with ADA and.
Something.
That'd be from the town line.
Yeah, we're talking Situate all the way to downtown Red Lion.
And forgive my ignorance, Mr. McGowan, but I thought that one of the reasons we were holding up on South Main was because of the need to sewer that area and get that work done and then pave over it. Is that?
Well, we were looking at, if this was, if we were going ahead with a regional, and I'm still not sure about that yet, yes, we were looking to do that. We'd have to repave that entire road.
Would we have to do that regardless of regional or not? Like, in terms of, I thought we were going to sewer that regardless of regional, like maybe regional, but maybe not, we'd still sewer that area?
Yeah, there was a, someone floated doing it without. There hasn't been a consensus by the board.
Okay. Mr. Grady, did you?
Brian, I'm going to ask Brian that question. If we didn't, do we need to resewer South Main? And if we say, this board say we had all the money in the world to spend, what could we do with it? You know?
Do we need to put sewer in South Main?
Yeah.
So that question's kind of, it crossed a lot of threads. So we're talking about the Gulf and cleaning up the harbor, and the Gulf on South Main Street is not sewn. I did have a slideshow, but I know I run late, so I didn't want to. The projected areas that we talked about with regional sewer was Situate, was North Situate in and around the Gulf, Water Street side of North Situate. The North Situate, you have a T Station, then South Main Street. And that sewer would be wheeled up towards our plant, and then we would send an equivalent amount to hull from like the little harbor area. But that would clean up the Gulf. So it's, you know, do we need to sewer it? It helps cleaning up the Gulf, and it helps with, you know, many failing septic systems and all that, so.
That's where the difference is. Situate's issues than Cohasset's. I think the question was, do we need to sewer Cohasset parts of South Main? Is that where the problem is coming from? Or is the problem coming from Situate, and Situate wants to solve all the problems they have over there by having us sewer South Main?
Yeah, go ahead.
They're both.
And what's the percentage?
Well, I think in land area, I don't know about the homes per se per square, say, mile. Land area is probably 60, 40, Situate. So we'd go from Main Street down to Havelley, should be down to Gannett, down to basically Forest Street. And there's probably, it's a greater length for Situate than it is for Cohasset. However, there's a bunch of homes, if you're driving down Matrix, there's a bunch of homes on the right-hand side that go all the way up to the back of 3A that we want to grab. So, and I can tell you antithetically, walking to the yacht club yesterday and going through the marina, you can tell what the sewer is coming through without, without you. We have to be a science major.
So it's coming from Situate.
So, so it's a combination of both primarily. At some point in time, you know, I don't want to, so my head bothers on here, but at some point in time, I think it has to be done. It's one of the reasons we're doing it. But can I switch gears a little bit? Because I wanted to update you on something else, which is actually probably a little more monumental.
Okay. Please do then.
Our plant is, the heart of our plant is a phenomenon called membranes, which pumps air and cleans out our bad stuff that's failing. So we have two sides. One is not working very well at all. The other one is working okay. We had previously had the membranes for 12 years. They have a useful life of 10. We got another two out of them. They died the end of 2019. We replaced them in 20. We paid for it. So we had, we put money in our enterprise fund, which we've been doing. We paid for it. Cost, I think, about a million, six or seven for two of them, along with the shipping of, from, came from Hungary to the United States. We have a meeting, we've actually gone into some legal actions with the company because of this. We have another meeting with them Thursday. Brian and Chris will be involved in the board to find out exactly what their remedies are, because I have another operative, the company hasn't offered us any remedies. Our plant operator, Woodard and Kern, has been doing an Excalibur job in cleaning these things by hand. They've just been phenomenal at it. At some point in time, they may just drop. I asked today, knowing I had a meeting tonight, okay, so what's the likelihood of these things, you know, keeling over soon? Nobody wanted to get something, which for reasons, you know. The last time we had about, was it about six months before? We knew there was degradation on the, maybe about six months before they just. Now if that happens, I'm moving out of town. So it's, it's a big problem, because we have to figure out a way to collectively fix this. We can send, what, up to 200,000 gallons to hull?
So we can send about 120,000 gallons max to hull. And so our plant is a 450,000 gallon per day plant. That's the permit. And.
And 350, as we get to that, that's what it does, Scott said?
I think today was 250, but, but, you know, it ebbs and flows. When we have a lot of rain, there's INI, which is infiltration and flow from groundwater and leaks and pipes. That contributes a lot to the plant. So at any rate, when we do have an emergency, which we have in the past with the membranes, we have to divert flow to hull, which is important. You know, we'll always need that relief valve. That IMA with hull is, it expires in 2028. So, you know, it's five years. It'll be here fast. We got to start, you know, discussions now with them on what that next IMA is going to look at, look like. It was a 20- or 30-year agreement.
But what you're saying, Mr. McGowan, is we can only divert up to 120 anyway, and we have 350, so we have a gap. We're going to have to.
We almost need to increase our flow, because we can't send it anywhere else. We can't send it to Hail.
Yeah, there are sections of town, particularly the village area and all the gravity, the older sections, that only go to our plant. And unless there was some major capital investment with, you know, pumping it elsewhere, it's going to our plant. So that needs to get treated at our plant site.
And the Select Board authorized, I want to say in early April, 1.2 million in potential ARPA funds for the sewer. For the purpose of the Sewer Commission trying to find a solution, which maybe is a part of the issue, like what's the solution and what to even apply for? So the money is potentially there. We just need to figure out what the solution is.
Yes.
Okay. Is that the critical issue? How do we spend the money?
I think it needs to be voted on and secured by the town.
The Select Board voted on, we voted already, yeah.
We may have to come back with a very specific project.
Okay.
The money's, the money's.
Okay, gotcha.
We've held it, you know, from our point of view, but we haven't applied yet to spend it because we don't have a project. So when that's concrete, we'll have to come back from the board for a vote. So the category.
So if we use that to repair the membranes?
It could be. One of the challenges is that we don't have a clear answer to this, and this may drag on for a substantial amount of time. I know Brian's talked about a project to control this INI issue, which also exacerbates the plant's capacity issues. The other issue was that even if we ordered them today, it would take us a year to get them.
But you know you're going to need them, right?
Oh, yeah, at some point in time, we're going to need them.
Is there any emergency assistance we can get from the state or some other larger entity? Like MWRA that we could partner with?
No, I mean, I think, I think we have a lot of needs out there. We have INI, we have the plants, the membranes. They're both about a million bucks in around the village area. So my interesting is, let's get, let's secure the funding for sewer, because the ARPA is for water sewer or the other one. Get it secure so that it's not, let's get caught back.
Well, if, and maybe you can help me, if in fact these membranes are, how old are they?
Two years.
Oh, they're only two years and they're failing?
We replaced them in 20, mid 2020.
Okay.
So they're defective?
So there's attorneys for Veolia coming in Thursday to speak to Brian, Chris and I, and now we're on a attorney, and we'll see what happens. I think at the very least, we want to get one of them replaced immediately so that we have two, and see if it works. I mean, one of them is, I think, defective. The other one.
We bought two, two years ago. One is failing, and the other one kind of looks like it's failing.
Well, I think, keep us posted. We've got the funding sitting out there. It's just a question of what you recommend.
We'll know more Thursday.
Okay.
See what the committee's going to do for us.
Okay.
We have, we've been researching other companies that might make them. Woodard and Kern, who's our plant operator, I can't tell you where this is going on, but in New Hampshire or anywhere, they replaced the Veolia membranes with another companies, and that was just a complete disaster. And they've gone back to the, now they have a different type, they have a larger tank, so they have a different membrane construction than ours. Ours is very, because of the physical space of the plant, it's tight. And I'll take this opportunity, anyone who wants to come down and see what we do, you know, let me know. It's a challenge. It's, it's a challenge.
Okay, so moving forward on sewer, Brian, I see you do have a very long impressive looking presentation.
Yeah, no, I just got to the one screen because the other question vote. So the pink, the magenta and the green are North Situate areas around the Gulf. And the blue is the unsued part of South Main Street coacid. The other red line is, that's already existing.
Is this created that sperm, sperm right there or is that?
That's South Main Street along the blue. North Situate right there. So that's, that's one of the proposals in the regional study.
Okay, so that kind of light blue.
The light blue is South Main Street coacid.
Coacid. So that's all we really are responsible for suing.
Well, if this happens, Situate may be the whole thing.
Well, I didn't ask that. This is, this is what we have to worry about from a town's perspective.
Yes.
Okay. So leaving aside for whatever may happen down the line, this is something there to that? And that's not sewered now?
None of that is sewored.
The, I'm just talking about coacid.
No, no, none of that blue area.
Are there any failing systems in there?
I don't know offhand, but I know there's some old septic's in there.
And there's also open pipe, like they had 100 years ago.
Open pipe?
Yes, Mr. Pimpar.
I just had a question as far as the coacid area there. Brian, do you know what the capacity would be there or the additional flowage? If all of, if that area were actually sewored? If we come, coming up, I know it's not going to top the 350, but we just have to get close to the 80% design of the treatment plant. You need to actually upgrade the treatment plant in accordance with EPA federal regulations. So you're coming up close to that 80% in a little bit.
So there's our, our total capacity is 450. Exit, you know, the annual average daily is 330. That 30,000 represents the stop and shop that's already sewored. So from Situate, that's the seat, the, the next line, 156,000 was the Situate area. And I'm sorry, that does include, yeah, that includes coacids too. So basically Situate and coacid was the 156. And then if we then diverted 100,000 to Hull from our North coacid, that would leave a remaining capacity of 33,000. Anyway, that's, that's the rough math they did on that graphic we just looked at.
But that doesn't, that doesn't tell us what coacid would, the additional to do south.
It doesn't, it doesn't take out the coacid.
Yeah, well, that's what we're trying to figure out.
So if we did the additional from Situate, it looks like we're in the forced upgrade scenario. 450 minus 30 is going to be 420, which is 80% of, over 80% of 450.
It's over the 80% for sure. And the requirement, when you go, so if you hit that 80% threshold, you're required to do a CWMP, which is a comprehensive wastewater management plan on what you're going to do with the remaining capacity. And the regional study would qualify for that. So at any rate, that, that's the kind of the capacity calculation on that, that graphic we just.
I will just say, I deal with wastewater treatment plants every day in my professional life. It's, it's rare that any municipal, we have 519 wastewater treatment plants in all of New England that I oversee. It is rare to have a treatment plant hit its 80% design capacity. Very rare.
Oh, if I could just follow up on that. But if we're at 330 out of 450 now, that's real close to 80 already before we do any of this expansion.
There's not a lot of wiggle room.
Before any of the additional sewer.
And right now, our membranes can't handle it any day.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so moving forward from here, it sounds like we need to continue to have a pretty in-depth discussion. I don't want to make you stay later. And we do have another agenda item after this. But, Mr. McGowan, I think maybe we need to stay in close contact in order to help you with the membrane issue and to figure out the capacity issues, which are going to be significant. But going back to the original issue with South Main Street, just as long as we have three of the key stakeholders here. It sounds like from what I'm hearing that in terms of paving South Main, is there any way to pave South Main while we figure out the sewer issues? And because Brian, I hear you saying, let's not do it. Let's do the utilities first. Let's figure out the sewer. But, Mr. McGowan, maybe you're saying, well, maybe we can run a sleeve through it. So I'm just trying to like figure out.
Oh, I think, so South Main's been on the shortlist for five years and the can's been kicked down the road. So it's, it's in the condition that, you know, dough and church were in.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, we're gonna have to keep patching it. And if we don't pave it in the next two to three years, it's, it's just gonna fall apart. So I'm in favor of paving it. But I was just saying, ideally in a perfect world, get all the utilities done.
Right, yeah.
Try to queue them up.
Okay.
That would include that sleeve, I imagine.
Okay.
And then we did that for Cunningham Bridge as well. So we, when that was done, we didn't have connections across it. So we put that in there to facilitate.
Preserve options?
How far does the Village Sewer go?
To St. Anthony's.
To St. Anthony's, okay. Okay, Mr. Grady.
Good. So Brian, question. Who was to come to a decision on whether we're going to regionalize or not? Just to get this done and get it done right. Do you have South Main?
I mean, ultimately, it needs to go to town meeting vote.
Yep.
You know, if we go down the process, the next, the next steps were, would be a phase two of the CW, the RCWMP, the Regional Comprehensive Plan. The first phase has already been done with the study. The second phase, we'd kind of flush it out some more and then file an ENF, which is environmental notification form to start the permitting. But in that process, you know, all the design would need to be flushed out, where the pipe's going, all that stuff.
No, I'm getting you. You said it's been on the, on the quote unquote docket for six years or more. That's what I'm saying. It's tough to move all of us and start speeding up the process and go one way or the other. So we can get it done, get it done right, whichever direction we're going.
Yeah, discussion's been going on between Hull, Hingham and coacid for six years.
All right.
Okay, well, this was helpful. Anything else before we move to the next agenda item? All right, thank you. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you. I would suggest that, I know we want to talk about zoning bylaw reforms, including to get back to Mr. Callahan. I would say, yes, we do the board and committee now to get back on that item, including if there's folks in the audience, but, like Mr. Benetti. But, and then we can return to zoning bylaw reforms after that. If everyone is okay with us moving the agenda slightly. Would anyone like to make a motion to amend the agenda to do the zoning bylaw reform after we get through the committee appointment?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so let's go to the Community Preservation Committee. I see Mr. Benetti is in the audience. Great, thank you for coming. Is there anyone in the audience on Zoom? Is Mr. Dickie here perchance, Mike Dickie? No? Okay.
I talked to Mike today. He did not mean to go on.
Okay.
Mike, excuse me, Mike Dickie?
No. I know, but I talked to him this morning. Specifically told me that he did not want to be on C.
On CPC?
Okay, let me just, let me call this to order. Let's, let's go through what's on the agenda right now. So right now, we're at the Community Preservation Committee agenda item. There's three seats. Mr. Senior, I want to confirm with you the length of time for each of the three seats. Could you confirm the terms?
So there's three citizen members. And to reset the terms, one seat is one year. One will be two years and one will be three years. Rejoice, it doesn't matter who gets it.
And we have a question as to whether the bylaws allow for that.
Yeah, all the bylaw did was establish the committee. And when, and it was first set, that's just the way the classes went. So the board, two years ago, reset them so that instead of all three citizens, up at one year, stretched that so you'd have at least one a year. Because other seats are all ex officio through committees, as Mr. Black tells from his service.
Okay, got it.
I had a question for Gene, so thank you for explaining.
And so we've already interviewed Mr. Riordan, Mr. Souza, Ms. Dial yesterday. Mr. Fernando has an application. He is in Europe for work right now. He cannot attend, but he is interested in CPC. He's also applied for COMCOM and the ZBA. And we have Mr. Benetti. And so, Mr. Benetti, thank you for coming. We're going to go through the same process we went through with the other applicants. Mr. Benetti, if you wouldn't mind just saying for a brief minute, your interest in continuing to serve on CPC?
I've been on the board for 12 years. Chartered for the whole 12 years. Very proud of the work we've done over the period of time. It's, I always refer to it in gene, Paul and Chris as well. I refer to the ZBA committee in town because, as you all know, with the exception of the citizens at large, everyone already has to be on another committee. And even in the case of the citizens at large, Mike Dickie is one and he's on ZBA. I have long had an interest in the CPA. And actually, a former banking customer of mine was the person who wrote the act, Cindy Snow Cream. It does a lot of good and it covers areas that may not get the attention and funding for the communities of ours.
Thank you, Mr. Benetti. We'll start the same way we started yesterday. Mr. Creighton, would you mind starting how you would like to proceed with?
I'll ask Russ the same question I asked all the other applicants, which is, you've had various things and interests and commitments around town. If, do you see your role on CPC as facilitating the other, some of the other interests in which you have knowledge around town? Or is it more of a general perspective?
Well, the bulk of what we've done in the last 12 years has been either for town buildings or purchasing land for the town. Prior to being on CPC, I was on the Harbor Health Committee. I was one of the founding members of the Hagerty Committee that developed Mariners Park. I was then on CPC, like I say, for 12 years. And during that time, pretty much all we did was town-related. You know, I volunteered up to 30 years of my time if I wasn't interested in working with and making the town a better place.
Thank you.
But also, while we've always, I don't know if we've ever, not in the last 12 years anyway, ever turned down a project of the towns. But we, we do have a responsibility under the CPA to be open to other groups that may or may not be interested, or may, it would be prevalent if they were, but they would be interested in accessing CPC. I don't wish the CPC wasn't having to be exclusively for town use. And for examples, I would use the sailing club, swim club, even the two churches, both the swim club and the sailing club, as well as Sandy Beach, came to us in my hometown. You know, and just recently, one of the things that I'm really proud of that we did, and you've probably seen it, wow, I don't know. If you, if you look on Facebook, if you haven't, it's going to be on Friday's email that Justin puts up. And that was we purchased a sand-accessible wheelchair for Sandy Beach. It had always kind of bothered me that, you know, if you have ability issues, we have a snow fence down there, but you're still 100 feet from the water. And giving access to people who wouldn't have it is, is one of the things I really like. But there it is, is a, while it's not a town asset, it's a big town asset at the same time. We don't own it, but we get a lot out of it. It was nice to be able to, I think, to help them conserve a few bucks and help some people who have been not ignored but not served well.
Mr. Grady, I believe you were next in line.
Russ, where do you see yourself as working collegially with the select board?
Well, I've never had a problem with the select board. I know last, let me finish, Paul. I, I have no problem working with the select board. The difficulties that we had, we want to put it that way, in the last, prior to the last town meeting, was a lot was in the result of we were given more projects to review than we had money to fulfill. And we were given short time to look at it, at those things, which would make us, if we approved it with only that short a period of time, would make us look irresponsible not doing our fiduciary duty by fully vetting a project. And especially in the case where, I think, if we had funded everything, it would have taken not only all the money that we have, it would have seriously handicapped the future of the CPC because of the amount of payment on a bond. And, you know, I like to think we've all had long well. I know you and I, I know you and I've had a few words, Paul. But it's akin to, to when you go and play a basketball game or a baseball game with your friends. You play hard. And when you're done, you're still friends. We're all going in the same direction. Everybody, you know, your board and my board wants to do what's right for the town. But there is a certain amount of autonomy that the CPC has under the law. And like I say, I've, I've never had a problem with, with getting along with the town select boards in the, not just the 12 years I've been on CPC, but the almost 30 years that I've volunteered for the town.
The, I would say, and the same thing I said to the people last night, there should be a mutual respect. I'll say it to the same, the same thing I said to the people that we interviewed last night. There's got to be a mutual respect between the people. And I'm not a fan of, you know, I'll be quite frank with you. Last-minute meetings, things done. That last minute, I'll throw it right out there, that town, rated town meeting, the last-minute meeting at the kitchen table, sitting out in the cafeteria, right before, just to change the funding, 45 minutes before a town meeting. And it was the town hall, whatever you were doing with that and raising.
It's the town hall, yeah.
And that was right before a town meeting. So it's, you know, again, you have to forgive me. So you see where that kind of strikes an imbalance with me.
The impetus of that meeting was not on the part of the CPC. The town and the town hall building committee approached us to see if we would be willing to increase our participation, obviously in the hopes that it would make approval of the project more feasible. We had, was it seven years ago? Probably, I guess, whenever the last town hall thing came up. We gave a lot of money at that time. I think we were going to come up with close to $6 million. Chris can correct me if I'm wrong on that. And on the meeting that night, it was at the request of the town. You know, I'm, I'm with you, Paul. You know, you do it at the last minute, it raises suspicions.
It did.
You know, and, and I, I think, Chris, you probably heard me saying that I had some reservations about it. But, and honestly, deep inside, I knew it was going to make a difference. That was not going to, well, the town hall last time. If we could do something that might help it without crippling us, I took that opportunity. If we had the funds and we weren't, and it wasn't just me who had these concerns, and we, we weren't looking to have to bond so much of it. It, you know, it, it would have, it, it just wasn't going to go through. It was nothing more. It wasn't, you know, gee, damn, is that as if it's the last minute. We were trying to make it work. I don't recall what the vote was, but I believe there was only one no vote. And that was not me.
If I could clarify, there were several no votes, one of which was me. And when it's my turn for questions, we can.
Okay, okay. So I do want to move on to Ms. Marr. She's next in line. But before we do so, any?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Thanks, Russ.
Hi, Russ, welcome. I'm going to rephrase my questions from last night due to your tenure on CPC, but it kind of revolves around the same thing. How would you improve the grant process, and if you feel it needs improvement, and work that into a spending philosophy?
Well, we, one of the things that has been instituted, not quite, not like a written down policy, because I've been on the board, is we very rarely do 100% financing. The ones that we do 100% on are town-owned properties, Deer Hill, some playgrounds, things like that. And it's, I look at redoing the application some, and I'd like to institute a policy where, I don't want this to be, I used to be a mortgage banker for 25 years. Any one of you got a mortgage, you all get a commitment letter that spells it out. We haven't done that, and I'd like to see us do that. Because we've had a couple cases where people, your board changed its makeup after approval, or everybody, you forget things here and there. I think we need to be, and we have been more diligent in having funds from the applicants available. I'm going through the CPC application right now in Plymouth. I'm the trustee of the property of the oldest house in town. And you wouldn't believe, you meet with seven different boards before you get into the CPC. They're a little over the edge on it, but we can tighten it up. I think we've been very fortunate in that, being a small town, pretty much anybody who comes in front of us, we've all known them for a while. And there's a certain level of trust that you get from dealing with people you know. And that's what it probably is, is one of the reasons why we've never had anything that says this is this, and this is how it goes. And that has to stop.
Thank you. Mr. Plux?
Same question I asked the other candidate, it's Russ, if you could speak to the importance of transparency and engagement in making recommendations about what are effectively public funds.
Well, when we had a full-time newspaper in town, we were constantly in the paper about what we were doing. We were reaching out to people to get projects, which hadn't really been done as aggressively as we've been doing it. Like I say, I approached Sandy Beach about doing the bathhouse. I approached First Parish on the windows when they, when we did them, almost 12 years ago now, I believe. And I've, we have an annual meeting where we advertise and ask for people to come in, and I have made it a point the last 12 years to have everyone, like in your case where you were representing planning board, to go back to planning board, find out what we might be able to fund. When the CPC first started, it was kind of, it didn't really, it didn't get a lot of exposure, and people weren't sure how to access the funds. And I've been making push to rather than coming to us, we go in the paper and say we're looking, we're opening the purse. If you've got a project you think is going to qualify, we're going to have a meeting on this date. And we've increased the amount of output, or outreach, rather, to a level that hasn't been done.
Thank you. And I also want to note, following up on Mr. Grady's point, I was also very uncomfortable with the way that meeting just prior to the town meeting was handled. I was present. I was not informed that the meeting was underway, and the meeting was brought, I was there.
I know you were there. I thought an email had gone out to everybody.
An email had gone out, but then the meeting started without any effort to collect the members who were present. In addition to that, the meeting was on an issue that I thought had already been extensively discussed and concluded, and then the vote passed by one vote. So again, I was concerned with that, and it raises concerns for me, so.
And then again, the reason we looked at it again was at the request of the town. And I think, yes, it was, Chris. Michelle had asked if we would take a look at it, and we did, you know. Personally, I was surprised it went. I wasn't disappointed when the whole thing went down, but I did not take it on myself to see if we wanted to increase the amount of money. Carolyn Coffey, a few people on the town hall committee, asked if we would reconsider it, and in the attempt to be cooperative, we said yes. I mean, when we have a meeting, we don't tell them, you know, yeah, we're going to give you this or not, but I think opening anybody to the, to be able to come in and discuss their requests.
My objection is that after a decision had been made, a somewhat irregular meeting was called to reconsider the decision. So that's the objection that I raise.
Mr. Benetti, I'm sorry, Chris, anything else you, okay. So you alluded to this earlier, and I'm going to ask the same question I asked everyone yesterday. CPC has taken on this sort of unofficial approach of 50-50 with respect to contributions, including with respect to the town and projects that the town is funding. In fact, that came up with the Beechwood project as a reason for why it potentially could not be fully funded. So now moving forward, now that we're dealing with the remnants of CPC not funding the Beechwood project previously, and the select board has just approved about an hour ago, a goal to move forward with the Fields and Recreation Project, the bigger project, which is approximately 3.6 million, which now includes Beechwood, but also includes the tennis courts, as well as the Deer Hill multipurpose fields and Lacrosse Wall, all of which are eligible for CPC funding. My question for you is, if the select board's goal is to try to avoid doing tax increases for this project because it might otherwise require a debt exclusion, would you be willing to support 100% funding for that Fields and Recreation Project?
We have done town at 100%.
But for the 3.6 million project?
I've said it a number of times in meetings, terms of town projects, that we don't look at doing 50-50. And actually, even in the case of, like the Historic Society, a lot of their stuff is at 100%. Some places just don't have it. But in the case of the town, we've been not asking for half. We do ask for some participation, trying to make what money we have, not last, but be able to spread around a little bit more.
Okay, so it sounds like you'd be willing to do 100% CPC contribution for the 3.6 million?
I would look at that, yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, so right now, we have, I'm just looking at our agenda. We have six applicants for three seats. We have Mr. Riordan, who we interviewed yesterday. We have Mr. Souza, who we interviewed yesterday, Ms. Dial, who we interviewed yesterday, Mr. Benetti, who we just interviewed. We have Mr. Fernando, who is interested but unable to make it tonight because he is working abroad. He also applied for the Conservation Commission, which has two open seats, as well as the ZBA, which has one open seat, and we have another person, Mr. Chidick, applying for the ZBA. And then I should add in, we have Mr. Dickey, Mike Dickey, who's currently on the CPC, who just put in an application earlier this morning, and also emailed Tracy and I about applying for the zoning bylaw working group, because he was recommended by the ZBA to do that, and he indicated he would be willing to do that. So Mr. Dickey confirmed that he would be able and willing to fill that much-needed spot on the zoning bylaw working group for the ZBA. So I just wanted to sort of set out the whole universe for everyone, so we could see that we do have some people applying for multiple spots.
I think when I talked to Mike this afternoon, he said, I'm sorry, the zoning bylaw was what he was not, no longer interested in. He didn't quite understand that.
Zoning bylaw.
Zoning bylaw. I didn't mean to say CPC.
Okay, okay, okay. So do we want to have some discussion about nominations for CPC?
Put someone up, you mean?
Yes, Ms. Marr.
Do, considering that there's two additional applicants, do we want to wait to interview them, or?
I did reach out to Mr. Dickey and tell him that we were going to be having interviews to see if he was interested. I did not hear back.
Okay.
My only concern with waiting is that we have some pretty big projects that we want to start convening CPC to try to stay on a good fall town meeting schedule. So, you know, the longer we wait, the longer we sort of fall behind on the timeline. So that's just what I'm trying to navigate. We could, on July, on July 11th, see if Mr. Fernando is available then, as well as Mr. Dickey, and do the final vote then, if people are so inclined. I'm not sure how much is going to happen in between now and then from a CPC standpoint, but I do think that the sooner we can get CPC constituted, the better, including with the Fields and Rec Project, that we want to really start getting in front of them and socializing as soon as possible.
I would lean in the direction of moving tonight.
So would I.
Okay. Would anyone like to?
Individually?
I'm sorry?
Could we make a motion individually, or are we going to do it? For instance, I'd make a motion at first glance right now, nominate Darren Souza, CPC.
Okay.
He's shown, he's shown a lot of interest, and I think the background's there.
I would second that.
Okay.
Who is this? I couldn't hear.
Mr. Souza.
Darren Souza.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would just note too, for the record, that Mr. Souza and Mr. Fernando have applied years ago for CPC, and have been waiting for an open spot that has, this is the first time in at least two years we've had open, citizen-at-large open seats.
You need to set a term length, just to be clear.
Are you nominating him for the three, the two-year, or the one-year?
Three.
For the three-year, okay.
Souza for three.
Souza for three, okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jen Dial for two years. It's a two-year term, Chris?
This is a two-year.
So three, two, one.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion?
I liked Jen very much. I thought she had the right energy and the right perspective. I'm just, she also is interested in school facilities, which I'm sure we're going to, well, the moderator and the school committee might have challenges in filling their open
So I did actually hear from Jen Leskey, who is the select board's current appointee for school facilities, who was just appointed to the, school committee. And she says that there's three potential new members. Now, obviously, people have to apply. There's three potential new members to fill the spot, her spot, and the two school committee spots. So it sounds like there's other new members out there. Ellen, just so you know, when we first did the school facility committee interviews, we had like 12 people. And we interviewed many, many, many people, and could only pick three at that point. So we had many people that were interested if we wanted to reopen.
It took a long time. It took over a year to get there.
Yeah. At least when I was there, within a week, we had a ton of people, because we advertised pretty heavily on Facebook, and it was successful, and a lot of people stepped up.
We passed the bylaw in the spring of 2020, and had it on our agenda every meeting for a year. And we got to five in the summer of 2021, which was a quorum.
Okay, okay. I would be, I thought Jen was very impressive. I think her past experience handling and interfacing with the PSO and the grant application process and dealing with a huge amount of different organizations, and I was impressed too by her discussion about working collaboratively with the CEF to try to sort of rebuild and revitalize those relationships was impressive. So I would be in favor of Jen as well. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Let me just clarify, what's the term for that?
She's two, and Darren's three.
That's why I have her.
All right. Should we redo the motion just for clarity? Do you want to redo it real quick for Jen, just to make sure the record?
I did. So I'm nominating Jen Dial for two.
Oh, you did it for two? Okay, never mind, I'm sorry, Paul. I just missed the two at the end. So now we have a one-year term.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Riordan. I think he brings a lot of experience, and I think you need to have some on the board. You shouldn't have all, all new people. He seemed very level-headed, very objective about things.
I'd second that. If I could just comment, then my experience with Mr. Riordan on the board was extremely positive. He's thoughtful, helpful. I think he'd be a good asset to the CPC.
I felt the same way when I was on CPC too.
So did I.
Any further discussion?
So I would nominate him for the remaining one-year term.
Okay.
I'd second it.
And I would say, Mr. Benetti, we do appreciate all of the time and service that you provided to the town on CPC. All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Benetti. We appreciate your time and service. All right, so now, let's move on to the Conservation Commission. Like I said, Sanjay Fernando has applied for one of the two open seats, and he's also applied for the ZBA. I reached out to him to reconfirm his interest in these committees. He said yes, he was interested. He's obviously not here because of a work conflict, so we could put it off to later. My only concern is the ZBA. The ZBA is a committee that really needs to be fully constituted and have work continue. We've got projects, permits, ongoing, it's like planning board, you really need to have it keep going.
Who's appointed? What do we have?
So we have one spot open for the ZBA. We have Mr. Chidick.
And he's on there.
He's, it's, it's a, he's reapplying for his seat, and Mr. Fernando has also applied for that.
For an open seat? Okay, I started by nominating Woody Chidick to?
Yeah, I was about to.
Yep. Point of order, it's not on our agenda.
It's on the amended agenda.
It's on the amended agenda?
Yes. It's in the packet.
Is there a third amended agenda?
I think Tracy added it to the packet.
I've got it right here.
Okay, all right, then I print, I didn't print out the right one.
Hey, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just told her to update the agenda.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Should I, could I make a motion?
Sure.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Woody Chidick to continue on the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that brings us back to the Conservation Commission. Do we feel like we want to have Mr. Fernando in to speak with him first? Are people comfortable moving forward?
I would take the chair's recommendation personally.
Mr. Plux?
Having been on the Conservation Commission, and who else has applied, or is just one or two?
There's two open seats.
Yes.
One is, I believe, Eric Eisenhower's seat, is that right? But we then have an unfilled seat.
Okay.
Mr. Fernando has applied, yeah. I'm not sure Eric has applied yet.
Yeah, I believe he's expressed, he hasn't, we haven't gotten his application to the best of my knowledge, but he's a full member, and he's eligible for your point. knowledge, but he's a full member, and he's eligible for your point.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're only filling.
There are two associate slots open, which are...
Is Mr. Fernando interested in an associate position?
Actually, we're going to start, I think, Jen.
Yeah. I think you, I would like to see, if he wanted to go on associate, I would nominate him for associate.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I have a question, because on the list we got from Tracy, Kathleen Barrigan, did she submit an application?
She's already a member. So I think.
But she, but she's a member, but it expires 2023.
Yeah, so we're filling the associate right down here. So we need the applications from the existing folks still, so we'll do that next, once we get their applications in the door. I asked Tracy to go through and update as we got applications in, and so we've got Mr. Fernando's for the associate. We have two full members that we're still looking to hopefully get their applications in the door and pre-fill.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to confirm that we're not, you know, appointing someone who, in fact, doesn't want to do it.
Doesn't want to do it.
Yeah.
You're not here, you're appointed.
Yeah. That's a part of the application process, letting us test of whether you really want to do this.
So Madam Chair, where's your Sanjay Fernando?
He's, we knew he had a pre-existing work commitment.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So he's not able to make it tonight, but I did reach out to him to confirm.
I'm fine with that.
He was still interested, so.
So we passed him. I think we all approved it, didn't we?
So is there a motion? Jack, did you make a motion to?
I made a motion.
Is there a second for Mr. Fernando as an associate member of COMCOM?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the associate member position on COMCOM. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. All right. Now we go to the sidewalk committee. And we might have skipped over this, but just for belt and suspenders, in case we need to appoint Mr. Joyce as the associate ex officio member, so he can be part, fill the quorum as needed, would someone be willing to make a motion?
I would make a motion to appoint Brian Joyce as an ex officio member with voting privileges if there's not a quorum.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 All those opposed? None. Okay. Now we're on to fence viewer. We have Mr. Pratt and Ms. Satchuk, who have applied. Any discussion?
Would you mind clarifying, is there one seat open, or two?
There's two.
Okay.
Oh, there's two seats?
Yeah, both, but they're, both have been serving as a fence viewer for about three or four years.
Clark, clarify for me.
Yes, so, so, I'd start position that helps settle boundary disputes.
Like free mediation.
Free mediation. They're like, they're like boundary mediators. And they've actually had a couple of cases, believe it or not.
Have they?
You know, people have fences on the wrong side of a property.
I'd like to nominate Annette Satchuk and Bert Pratt for, for a fence sitter.
I would second it.
Glenn Pratt.
Glenn Pratt.
Okay.
All the livestock trespassing.
Seconded. All right. We have a motion and a second for the two fence viewers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We have one applicant for the Board of Registros, Michelle Antico. Any discussion?
Make a motion to Charlotte Antico to step up to the Board of Registros.
Okay.
Registros.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And just so my fellow members know, that as we get more applications in, I'm going to try to fill, you know, get them on the agenda as soon as possible to reconstitute.
Zoning bylaw, one of the two.
Oh, zoning bylaw working group. So we have Mr. Dickey out there, although I hesitate to move forward in light of.
I spoke to him today, and he was very, very clear. I think he, he said that he didn't, he was very clear that he did not want to do that. And I think if there's a miscommunication saying that we're not going to.
I think we should clarify before we.
Yeah, I think we.
Appoint, because I have an email from him at 4:00 saying he's interested and wanting to know if he needs to apply for anything else. So to me, that means, you know, he's interested, but let's clarify before we appoint someone who may not be interested.
That may be wrong.
Okay. So speaking of zoning bylaw working group, we did move the agenda item for the zoning bylaw reforms down to after this. And, you know, maybe this can be the beginning of the discussion. I'm mindful that it's getting pretty late right now. It's 9:20. We can either, A, kick this off to July 11th and have a discussion then. My only concern is, I know our zoning bylaw working group does need some guidance from us as we head towards Fall Town meeting, and, you know, our decisions will help guide their work. So I don't know if the board has a feeling.
I personally have a lot of feelings on zoning issues, so I can suggest that we leave some time for this on a future agenda.
Okay.
July 11th, maybe?
Okay. Why don't we carve out a significant amount of time on July 11th? We can all study again the zoning bylaw memo that Mr. Callahan provided. If we need additional information, which I think maybe I do, in terms of what we're being asked to do, if folks want to send questions that they have to Tracy, she can collect them, and we can send them to the zoning bylaw working group to get a better sense of what we're being asked to provide direction on, to have a more fulsome conversation. Right now, I think it's a little bit nebulous. So I would just ask that people do that in the interim, within like the next week and a half.
Is it your guidance that that communication to Tracy should be limited to questions, or would it be appropriate to express opinions outside of an open meeting?
I would suggest the purpose of the questions to Tracy is so that she can collate them, and, and Mr. Senior, maybe you have an idea about how best to accomplish this. I think what we need is, if there's background information we feel we need from Mr. Callahan, and maybe our lawyers, KP, we can send it to Tom, we can send it to Tracy and Tom, to try to figure out. It's really questions, I think.
I'll keep it to questions.
Yeah.
If it's agenda prep, you can share. If it's commentary, you know, if it's like, I really want more information on this, or I want to, I should talk to this, that's fine. As long as you're not saying, I want to support this, don't say that.
But I can say, I plan to ask you about.
Yes.
Oh, you know, that's, you know, Chris, that would be very helpful if you have a concern, because that lets us on the committee know what your concerns are. Surprise, surprise. So that's very helpful, and I encourage every other board member, because your questions reveal what you're interested in, and if there are hot buttons. Because what we're really trying to find out is, what is the sense? What are the hot buttons? So questions are more than welcome. Thank you.
So Jack, on that point, is there any sort of background memos that the ZB, that your group is, has from KP that we could look at, like additional information we can educate ourselves on?
I think some of them have already been sent.
Okay.
We are very fortunate in that the judge, retired judge, Chief Justice of the Land Court, Judith Cutler, has provided us a lot of information on this. And so remember that we asked KP Law to give us to take our zoning code and make it conform to the usually accepted standards of Massachusetts zoning. And she's done a very good job. So there are memos that I think we all have sent, and if not, Chris, if you could make sure that the board members get Judge Cutler's memos, that would be very helpful. And if you read them, it's pretty clear what we're doing. There will be additional things that might be, like, for example, the height, the height allowed. Now, that's a, that's a decision in Cohasset, and we had discussions about 45 versus 40 and all that. That's where the community comes in and weighs in. But I think it's pretty clear. But if there are questions about overbuilding or whatever, you can ask questions about that, because the purpose of this committee is to listen to the community and find what are the things that we're really concerned about. Our development is lot size, setbacks, how close a house can be. You don't want somebody right next to it. Other thing that everybody should think out is what's called the accessory dwelling. Accessory dwelling basically is, are you, what are the terms in which you'll allow an in-law type apartment within a single family? There's pros and cons on that. So if you have thoughts on that, you might raise a question about that.
You know, one thing I think that would be helpful, if KP has already begun doing this, is any sort of benchmarking that's out there. I know that the previous committee had done some benchmarking, the master plan offshoot had done some benchmarking, Ms. Dugan had done a lot of work, great work, so did Mr. Chidick. And, you know, is there pre-existing information that's already out there that we could draw upon in terms of how other communities, like what are the neighboring communities doing with height and, you know, different requirements that may be being presented? And I'm not saying that we should necessarily make those decisions, or at least, you know, say right now, ZB, you know, zoning bylaw working group, you need to like aim towards a 29-foot height requirement. But it would help, you know, get a sense of the sort of questions we want to ask them, too. So if there's previous benchmarking out there, including any work KP has done, or we've done on our own through previous work, I think that would be helpful to see, to the extent it's relevant to the issues at hand. Okay, so yeah, if people have questions and they want to ask those, if you could send them to Tracy and Chris, and they will collect them. Look at the memo that Tom sent, and if there's specific questions, like what does this even mean? You know, I think we can get additional clarification, too, there. And we'll put that on for July 11th, to try to get, advance the ball more quickly for them.
Right. And if I could just clarify, one of the things you just requested in terms of any additional information from KP Law, I mean, everything leading up to annual town meeting is online. So I guess, has there been any documentation since annual town meeting in preparation for Fall Special Town Meeting that the zoning bylaw group has been working on that we should see, that's not posted on the town website?
And a part of what I was alluding to earlier was that the previous zoning group had done a lot of benchmarking that wasn't necessarily online.
Right.
Because it wasn't proposed yet in warrant articles. And so if there's pre-existing work product, that would be helpful to know about and have, too. Like on accessory dwellings, even if KP hasn't done it for us, maybe they did something like two years ago, and the law hasn't.
The only kind of guy was somebody from a couple of years ago. The laws may have changed since, so.
May have.
But we'll find out, we'll find out what we can do.
Yeah.
You know, the MDCs on the resource, too, they often have.
That's true.
Benchmarking on their web. They have a lot of.
Like a library.
Studies on there, on their websites.
Okay. All right. Mr. Senior, we are at Town Manager Update.
So I have just one update, and it's just to talk a little bit about the fireworks, which are coming up on Sunday, July 2nd. There's lots of information on the website. I will let everyone know key points on. The parking lot will be closed in Sandy Beach, because it's going to be high tide. So do not plan to drive to Sandy Beach. You can walk, and Beach Street and Atlantic Ave from Beach over to Sandy Beach will be closed. So there'll be a safe passageway. It takes about 20 minutes to walk from the Common roughly down the road. You don't have to worry about cars coming at you. And there'll be some light towers, so there'll be lights, so you'll be able to walk safely. So you can walk, ride, walk, bike, you know, skateboard, not running anybody over. That's all available. There'll also be transportation provided from two stops, one at the high school, and one at the corner of South Maiden and Depot Court. So if you're downtown having dinner, you can hop on a bus, go down, and they'll drop you back off. So you can park at the town parking lot, or walk down and have dinner, and then hop on the bus. The buses will run between 6:30 and 10:30. So the fireworks are planned for about 9:15. That's the schedule for right now. So the one thing about the beach, because of the Plover situation, which is not prohibited, because the bars will be a little bit further on the shore. And also, no dogs, please. No dogs on the beach, to protect the owners.
That means you, Chris.
I know. I'm not sure if Haley, but she, I can tell you she's like, she goes, I'm trapped under my bed last night. I had to take it apart. So I hope she's not like that with fireworks. So that's the parking lot, again. You can park at the class of high school, the town hall lot, or the village lot, and the buses will run, or you can just walk. And there are, there will be handicap accessible. If you need to get down there for handicap purposes, there will be some dedicated spots for handicap access. So that's, if there are, lots of information on the town's website, there's information on the police website. So if you want to, there's a bunch of road closures. I won't go through them all, but as you can imagine, it's primarily Beach and Atlantic, at least along the area where the beaches, and also Nichols Road will be closed to anybody but residents, because that would be the primary way to get people in and out. So the buses will be around there.
Nice time.
Yeah. So in the, in the plan, there's no accommodation for a drop-off, because a lot of people aren't going to take the bus. A lot of people from west of downtown aren't going to walk, right?
You mean, do you mean where you can park?
No, to get dropped off. To say, because, so if, if Atlantic from Forest Ave South is closed, Nichols is closed, Beach Street is closed, Atlantic from the harbor.
Not from the harbor, from, from, from Beach.
No, but isn't it open northbound from the harbor to Beach Street?
Atlantic Avenue, northbound will be open one-way north of Sandy Beach, and southbound one-way south of Sandy Beach. So residents can come.
Yeah. I just, I just think without a drop-off ability, unless, you know, so if you're coming from North Cohasset, you've got to go up Forest Avenue, down around the harbor, up Atlantic Ave, and get dropped at Beach Street.
Yes. Or.
But you can take a bus.
Yes.
The bus is right, no, I know the bus. I'm just, I'm just saying, you're not going to.
You really can't get close to the beach.
Yeah.
Practically speaking.
Because of the high tide, normally, there would have been some ability to have some spaces in the parking lot, but between the Plover and the high tide, there's not going to be a lot of, as much room on the beach as normal, so.
The Plover doesn't take up that much space.
No, but I, again, I don't make the rules on that. I'm just.
No, no, I know, I know. What's interesting is the dichotomy between this plan and the 250th plan, which allowed for parking, you know, first come, first served.
And that's primarily because of the high tide.
The high tide is planned for the exact same time.
So what would you do differently?
Well, I would, I would provide for a space for a drop-off that perhaps might be closer than Atlantic Ave and Beach Street. Maybe, you know, is it Nichols Road and Atlantic Ave on the north end of the beach?
I think the bus picks up in Depot Court. So that's a logical place, to get down into the downtown and get dropped off there, and either take the bus or walk.
I think they're trying to do crowd control.
I'm sorry?
This is the first time this has been done around the Fourth of July weekend. It was a little bit of improvisation in terms of, for example, if school buses are not available, so there had to be a different alternative plan.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's awesome that the buses are available. I'm just saying, as the only method of getting there, it's restrictive in what is supposed to be a non-restrictive event. An event for the town. That's all I'm saying.
I, no, I'm trying to get your point. Where are you seeing it as restrictive? I mean, it's a new thing. I'm, no, I'm serious. I'm curious.
Yeah, yeah, no, that there's no, there's no ability to have a legit drop-off.
Right at Sandy Beach.
Somewhere closer. I mean, the closest spot is Beach Street. So you're still looking at half-mile walk, maybe, quarter-mile walk?
It's probably more like half-mile.
From Beach Street? Beach Street to Sandy Beach, I walk it all the time.
It's about a half-mile.
You think? I mean, you might, you might be right. I'm not saying, I'm not disputing it.
I mean, I'm not saying pull in and park. I'm just, I'm just saying, an area, you know, to circle and drop off. And maybe is it Jerusalem Road, southbound from Forest Ave to Nichols, and you, and you turn around in that, in that little north-end cul-de-sac there, and head back?
I think those are all conversations that we could have for future events at this point.
Yeah, no, I know.
We're locked, and this is what we're doing.
The buses are.
Understood.
Off at Sandy.
Yes, no, definitely.
So someone taking the bus.
Will be dropped off at the parking lot.
Okay.
We need rickshaws.
Well, I think, I think, I think the buses are trying to provide the middle ground of accessibility, but also the road closures are trying not to make it a zoo for Cohasset either, which I don't think are, so we're, because we have a lot of neighboring towns that may come, and we're going to have to manage that. I think if we allow tons of people to come through, you're not just going to get residents, you're going to get a huge flood of people. And I think we just have to manage safety, because then. And I think we just have to manage safety, because I know Hingham has struggled with that in the past, with their fireworks events. And so, I do think there's a safety aspect in crowd control by doing it the bus route, even though I hear your point, it might not feel as accessible.
Although, a bus is a bus, me, bus is a bus.
I can, I can, Hingham, I, we, you know, I planned on getting down there really early and parking our Fannies on the boat, and just, we're there all day.
Right.
Because the streets are open after that, and you're walking around. I think I envisioned, you know, Atlantic and Jerusalem, there're going to be a lot of foot traffic.
And in Hingham, that street turns into a parking lot pretty early.
Yeah, it's, so, I mean, I don't think there's any perfect plan, but I think it's a really fantastic thing we're doing.
Yeah.
I will also say that because of the distance off the, off the beach, you should be able to see these clay from Rocky Beach as well, and from the harbor. So, I mean, almost anywhere along the water, including in Tasker Beach, you can probably see.
Maybe because of the way the coastline curves.
Yeah, because you're, because it's a barge will be almost three-quarters of a mile offshore, because of the plover, so it's going to be.
Is it going to be out, is it going to be out beyond the swim buoy and the two route, outcroppings?
It's going to be out three-quarters of a mile, which is quite a distance, so.
Oh, okay.
All because of the birds.
The birds, the birds don't want to be right out there. They've already gotten their, the birds have their seats.
If I could ask you a different question also about the fireworks, what do we have planned for publicity?
So, so this is on Facebook, it's on town's website, you're free to circulate this. This is up there, again, you're.
You're going to go.
The anchor.
Yeah, they know, yes, they have it. We didn't want to go too crazy with pushing it out, so that people don't drive from all over, because the town's capacity for holding is small. But we globally, yes, it's on the anchor, and so that's, it's on our Facebook page, it's on the town's website.
Everybody's talking about it.
You're free to put it on your websites, too.
Chat, chat, chat on the beach on Sunday.
Was it?
All day, yep, chat, chat, chat.
Good stuff?
Good stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Except for who's paying for it?
I heard that 10143, a lady asked who's going to pay.
Everyone's paying for it.
Yeah.
We all are.
The fundraiser, it dropped out a little over $20,000, so, which will cover the busing and some costs that Sandy Beach has, and I think it will pay for at least some of the detail work, which is good.
Yeah, because the vendor came down a little bit.
Yes, I don't have the exact, she's been all over this one, so she's very, she's taking, taking a very well-rested evening off tonight.
Yeah.
So, this has been, it has been a, it's come together fairly quickly, but it's been a really nice collaboration between residents and staff, and folks who you don't always see doing this, so, but I got to give Craig and Paul a real, a real round of applause for all this work on this, it's driven the conversation and made this come together, so. Yeah, I think we'll also, so we'll also start after this, allow for transportation and future events, and figure out, and I've also had some conversation about future fun events, which will come back later. We're talking at the library about some fall, perhaps a fall, a fall tide kind of an event, which might have some fun, so we'll talk more about that in future meetings.
Halloween.
Part of the fun goal.
That's, that's the Halloween.
All right.
Was the Paranormal Society in Saturday night?
It's coming, July, it's July 8th.
Oh, July 8th, okay.
Yeah, if anyone's interested in doing that, just let Justin know, Justin's a point on that.
What do you do?
If you want to be at town hall for that, you approved a paranormal show that's coming into film at town hall, you have a medium, if you want to be there, let Justin know.
I'm scared of being there, I was like tapping on the window, what's that, what's